Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have a special meeting tonight. It is right now 5:03 PM. We have our actuaries and consultants from Foster &amp; Foster. In addition to that, we have some of our pension board members here. And stage is yours.
Good evening. We also have GRS for our police and fire, Francois Patrice, and he is going to present first.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Laurie.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Abdallah. No, sorry. Good afternoon, Chair Abdallah and fellow council members. As Laurie said, my name is Francois Peterse. I'm an actuary and a consultant from Gabriel Rode Smith, and I'm here today to present the highlights of the City of Dearborn Heights Police and Fire Retirement System.
Okay, for council members, he's going over this one now.
Yeah. Before I begin, I thought I'd give you just a very high-level explanation of what we do when we do an actuarial valuation. First of all, we collect information from the city. We collect information about people, that is your active membership, your retirees, and your drop members. We collect financial information, that is the transactions that happen during the year, as well as the market value at the end of the year. We also get sign up from the city on your benefit provisions for the fire, the police, and the police command, so that we can make sure that what we are valuing is what is being offered to those folks. We then set up a mathematical model where we then combine the benefit provisions and the valuation assumptions and methods that the board adopted. We put that in a mathematical model, and we run each person through that model to calculate the liability for that person, as well as the cost for your active membership. We then set up a second model. We call that a financing model, where we aggregate all those liabilities and those costs, and then we take the financial information that we receive, and we subtract it from your liabilities to see whether the system is overfunded, meaning you've got more money available than liabilities, or whether the system is underfunded, meaning that you have more liabilities than assets. As we will see a little later, the police and fire system at the moment is underfunded, meaning you've got more liabilities than assets available. We then calculate the employer contribution requirement. We calculate the funded ratio, and then we also put together this report. I'm mainly going to talk to you about Section A, the valuation results in this report. Section B is a summary of the data that we received, as well as the benefit provisions. Section C is a summary of the assumptions and the methods that we use to do this valuation. Section D is some financial reporting information, and then Section E is some risk disclosure measures that we've got to put in our valuation reports. If you have any questions about any section, please feel free to ask. Stop me at any point. Okay, if we turn to page A1. In the middle of the page, we've got a chart. And in this chart, we've got your fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 contribution requirement. That's the column on the right. And we compare that to what we presented last year for 2022 on the left. We can see that there was a slight decrease in your active membership, but pays are about $300,000 higher than what was the prior year. There are two components to your employer contribution requirement. The first component is what we call the normal cost. That is the cost for your active membership to earn another year's worth of service. The total normal cost rate this year was 24.21%, and that compares to the 24.23% that we had last year. That number is supposed to stay very stable unless there have been changes in assumptions, which there were not, or unless different benefits have been negotiated for, which have not happened. Your employees pay a portion of that normal cost. I believe fire members pay 7%, police patrol pay 5%, and police command pay 3%. I might have the groups slightly mixed up, but that's the rates that they pay is 3, 5, and 7. The weighted average is the 5 and 1/2. We subtract that 5 and 1/2 from the 24.21%, and that gives us an employer normal cost rate of 18.71. So that is the city's cost, or the retirement system's cost, for your active members to earn another year's worth of benefits in the plan. We take that 18.71, we multiply it with the projected payroll for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, the $10.361 million, and that gives us a dollar amount of 1.938. As I said earlier, you are underfunded, and you are underfunded by about $41.6 million. That $41.6 million does not have to be paid off immediately. You can if you want, but it does not have to be paid. That's what we call amortization. We amortize it over a period of 15 years, and it calculates to a payment of $3.6 million.
Excuse me, Councilor Chair?
Yes.
Now, that underfunding, that's been going on for a number of years, correct?
Yeah, that has been going on since probably 2011. And really, the downward trend started happening in 2008.
Are you...
2008, when the market collapsed. You were 115% funded at that point, and then it just kept ratcheting down, and we had 83.05% this year.
Better question for you. So when you say we're underfunded, obviously, it's not a good thing, but how common is that based on today's economics through other metro Detroit cities?
Oh, very common, not just in metro Detroit, right across the country. 83% is actually really decently funded. We've got systems that are a lot worse funded. We've got systems that are better funded, but probably the average, the median, is in the low 80s, high 70%.
So the only ones that would not be underfunded would be communities or cities that have the money available now as we speak?
Well, it...
Without having invested?
Yeah, it depends. There might be entities that closed their pension funds quite a while ago, that have retirees only at the moment, and they might have pre-funded it and made sure that they are fully funded when there's only the retirees left. But it's across the board. But 83% definitely is not the worst that I've seen this year.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Chair?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. You said we're $41.6 million short?
Underfunded, yeah.
Underfunded. And you said we don't have to pay that right away? You can split it up. Now, of that $41 million, does that include some of the past years that we're paying?
Yes.
Okay, that is including that?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not what happened during the year. When we look at the gain-loss in a couple pages, we added about $2.9 million to that this year. But it's underfunding that comes from about 2011 going forward.
What are you recommending that we pay this year? What was that?
3.6 plus the normal cost for your active membership to accrue another year's worth of service of 1.9 for a total of 5.581.
Now, do we collect that through Act 345, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilor Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, what was the, beside the 3.6, what's the 1.4?
The 1.9 is, it's called the normal cost. That's the cost for the active members in the plan, the 114 police and fire folks, to earn another year's worth of benefits. And by, I believe it's Michigan Constitution, you have to pay at least the normal cost plus interest portion on your unfunded liability. So the normal costs have to be paid. That's at $1.9 million.
Thank you.
Okay. If we turn the page to page A2. On this page, we've got a summary of your liabilities, your assets, and your funded rate. Line number A4, your accrued liabilities increased from 243.1 to 245.6 for an increase of about $2.5 million. Your assets, and we'll talk about the assets on the next page. This is not the market value, this is the funding value, increased slightly by about $600,000. And therefore, your unfunded liability, which is the difference between the two, increased by about $1.9 million for the 41.6.
Okay, can you explain? So assets in general, obviously, I'm familiar with the term, but in this particular case, so when it says like 2023, 203 million?
Yeah.
203.9 million in assets? Assets of what specifically? How does that work?
Well, that's the money that has been set aside, and that's the money that's invested by Mr. Riga and his team for the pension fund. So that's the money that, and like I said, that's not the market value, and we'll talk about the calculation of the 203.9. But that's the money that's been set aside to pay for pensions at the end of the 2022 year, 2023 year.
So we actually spend 203 million?
No, that's money that you've got available?
Okay.
To spend on pensions.
I was gonna say, wait a minute here. That's a confusion, because you say you can use it for pensions. That's money for the rest of the multiple years, not just, obviously, one year?
Yes, exactly. That's the money that's set aside specifically for pensions. That's invested by Mr. Riga and his team.
Okay.
Okay? So your funded rate last year was 83.6%, and this year it's 83.0%. So it's a slide down tick.
And is that due to the market shares and things of that nature?
Mainly due to the market share. And if you look at page A3, so like I said, we don't take the market value and offset it against your liabilities, because we know that market value is very volatile. Last year, the return was 34%. This year, it was negative 17%. So that creates up and down. If we use the market value per se, your contributions one year would go up, the next year would go down, and then up and down. And that's not the way that we want to get, and that's not the way that the city wants to budget for. You want a stable amount, or as stable as possible. So what we do when we take, when we get your financial information and we get your market value is, we smooth in gains above your 7% assumption, or losses below your 7% assumption over a period of five years. Line number E3, under the 2023 column, shows a negative $50.9 million. That is $50.9 million that the system essentially lost this year. That $50.9 million are not going to be recognized this year. Only 20% of it's going to be recognized this year. Further 20% next year, and so forth, till the last 20% is recognized in 2027.
So next year, if we have a, say it turns around and it was 50 million, so it might be a loss, right?
Well, we take 20% of whatever next year's gain, hopefully, hopefully, this again will be. So that calculates to $10.18 million. We take that loss, we add it to the 20% from the gains that we had the prior year, the And then the prior losses for the second and third year, and the prior gain for the fourth year, to come up with a loss this year of about $3.8 million. So even though you lost $50 million in market value, the loss for the system on your financial information is only $3.8 million. But that means that we are kicking losses forward for the next four years.
Kicking it down.
Yeah.
So the concern I've got, and so looking at these numbers, and I'm just using an approximation, you know, I see a potential difference here of almost 13 million, because we had a gain of almost nine, and now we have losses of almost four, 3.8. Why such a huge disparity from 2022 to 2023?
Well, in 2022, you had a market return of 34%. And 34% on $174 million. In 2023, you had a loss of 17.1% on $223 million.
Okay, so why would we have, okay, so why would we have a total loss? Because we haven't had a market crash, obviously.
No, you don't have a loss.
If I could be so blunt, is it bad investment? Just, I need that clarified.
No, I mean, if you look on the next page, page A4, in the last column, the estimated market rate of return, and remember, we are looking for 7%. That is the actuarial rate of return that the board set. In 2018, it was 9.2%. So there the investments beat your assumption. In 2019, it was 4.5%. So there it lost. In 2020, it was negative 0.64. There it lost again. In 2021, it was 34.06. There it won big time. But this year, it lost negative 17, and that's where the...
Sorry, I got confused. You were talking about 2022. Now we're in 2023, so.
Yeah.
As you mentioned, 2023, that's how I got confused, but it's 2022.
We do the valuation as of June 30, 2022, for the fiscal year starting July 1, 2023. So you're correct. The last year that was, was 2022.
What I'm trying to understand is, so you have been, I mean, obviously, better investments, clearly. But now, I'm just wondering out loud here, are we going into, and not that I would know more than you guys, but I'm just trying to clear this up, with our pensions here, with losses of 3.8 million, that is not a good investment, obviously, clearly. So are we getting, are we going into bad investments? Because last year, you had 8.86 in gains, in millions. And now we have losses of 3.8. If you go from 8.8 in gain and subtract it down to 3.8 in losses, you got a good 11, 12 million in discrepancy here.
Your system was not the only system that lost money last year in 20, by June 30, 2022. Every pension system in the, basically in the country, lost money. 2022 was just a very bad year. The December 30, and your valuation is, date is June 30. The December 31 plans lost even more money, because they had a full year in 2022 to capture those losses. We can only hope that it returns. It looks like it's cyclical. Last year with the inflation, we don't know. We hope that 2020, 2022, 23 is a better year. Maybe Mr. Riga can give us indication of, since there's only a month and a half left in the year, where we stand, but hopefully, we will turn a seven.
But I'm concerned, because based on these projections, and if you go even to further years, 24, 25, 26, you still see 4.7, 3.8, 1.1 in pension, 2027, 10.18 of losses.
Yeah.
So again, I'm not the expert on investments, but something's wrong with this picture.
As your investment consultant?
Okay.
He can maybe answer your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So if you want to know where we are this year, we're up above...
If you don't mind on the microphone, please, because... Thank you.
Sure. Evening, everybody.
Evening.
Afternoon. You have to really look at this on a very long-term basis. We've been working with you since 1986. Since 1986, our actuarial estimated return has been 7%. We've made about 8.44 compounded over that 35-plus-year period, which has added over and above the actuarial assumption approximately $75 million. We started with around, I think it was $28 million back in 1986, but returns are choppy. They always are choppy from equities. Historically, equities have given you about 10%, and I don't care if you look at 25 years, 50 years, 90 years. By the way, our plan has been in existence since the 60s. So we're going to be here for 100 years. The plan is going to be here. So to get to 7% or better, you have to take fluctuation in the value of the assets. Just another metric to show you how we've done versus other systems, we're, for 10 years, we're a little bit better than KALPERS. For 20 years, we outperformed KALPERS, and for 30 years, we outperformed KALPERS. Now, KALPERS is the California State Public Employee Retirement System, which is the biggest fund in the world, supposedly has 500 financial experts working for them. So we have done very well versus the competition, and relative to the required return of 7%. But in the short run, anything can happen. And we've seen that through the tech bubble, the housing bubble, high inflation, COVID. You just really got to be patient and disciplined and stay the course. And that's how we get to over 8%.
I know, but...
Is not by being, and we're not traders. We're not trading in and out of investments.
Right, you're getting into long-term, I presume relatively safe investments. But when you look at these numbers, again, and I'm just looking at the raw numbers here, the end result, to me, just logically, it would seem even, it would even make sense to not invest at all, and just put the money in the bank and get a quarter percent. Because I'm just trying to understand the logic behind losses this year of 3.8 million, 4.7 million next year, and so on, and so on, and so on, all the way up to 10.18 million in '27. So that would tell me, just based on those raw numbers, even though I see your point about over the long haul, I get it. But if we have projections of losses, I don't know, either we're getting into too, we're being too aggressive in our investments, taking a little bit more risk than maybe we need to, or maybe, again, maybe not invest at all.
Well, safe investments over the last 10 years, you would think, would be bonds, right? Or treasury bills. Okay, those returned about 1% over the last 10 years. Now, we did far better than that.
But we didn't. That's what I'm saying, it's in the negative.
No, I'm talking about over the last 10 years.
Oh, okay, over 10 years.
And that's the way we have to look at it. If you, if you invest your funds over 10 years, and you try to trade in and out and go to treasury bills periodically, or go to bonds periodically, if you just miss the best 15 trading days in the market, the best 15 return days, your return drops from around 10% to about 7%. And I can bring you some charts that show, I don't have them with me right now, but I can bring those for you. You just have to be patient, and you have to be focused on the long term. We have very good, very high-quality investment managers, and mutual funds, and exchange-traded funds. Some of what we do is active management, some of it is indexes. But if you had your money in bonds, we would have just gotten further and further and further behind. And so many different factors, which Francois can address, affect your funding levels. How long people are living, contract negotiations, there's all kinds of things that go into this. Every time we have a new contract, and the actuary has to perform an analysis, and there's new liabilities that are applied to the system. But in terms of the long-term returns, we've done exactly or better than what Francois has required us to make, which was 7%. So, but trying to trade in and out of things is just, that is a formula for underperforming.
Okay. Councilor Chair? Just real quick, maybe I missed something here. How do you figure the assumption in 2027 that we'll be losing $10.18 million? I mean, is there just a...
I'm not sure what you're...
Right here. Can I look at it? Total recognized investment gain, F6.
Yep. No, it's that amount.
Okay, they smooth gains and losses?
And what does that mean?
Over a five-year period. It means they're not all recognized at once. So if we make a lot of money, that's recognized over a five-year period, 20% per year. If we lose money, same thing happens. It's recognized, well, I should bring my friend Francois.
I see that now by putting, I see that by putting the numbers together now.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if we didn't smooth, and we only used the market value, we would take that $50.9 million heat this year immediately. We would use the 177 million to offset against your liabilities, and you'd be almost $100 million underfunded. But we are not using that $50 million loss immediately. We smoothed in 20% above the 7% assumption, and 20% below the 7% assumption. Now, that $50 million eventually has to be recognized. But the way that we do it, and the way that the actuarial profession does it, is by smoothing. So we take the 20% heat this year, but we've got to take a 20% heat next year, the year thereafter, and all the way to 2027, when it's a 10.18. When I was here last year, when we had the $45 million in gains, exactly the same happened. We had $45 million in gains. We did not use all of that immediately. We used $9 million for the one year, and that's being used this year again. $9 million next year, there's $9 million the year thereafter, and then the last $9 million is being used in 2026.
That lowers the deficit.
And that lowers the deficit. If we have a good year in 2024, yeah, it's going to lower all these losses. But we need those 7% returns. So anything above 7% will lower these amounts, will lower the negative amounts. Anything below 7% will add to that.
I say I understand it now. I said that last year, too. And then I'll forget that next year.
That's good. I can explain it to you.
I'm not a CPA, or actuary, or don't even pretend to be. So that's why I think all of us ask those questions.
But your system is not unique. Your system is not unique in this. Every system that we work on had a bad 2022. Nobody made their assumption.
I had a bad year 2022 also.
Sure.
Councilor Chair?
Yes, Councilman. That was one of my questions, the criteria you used to come up with these numbers. If that's the case, why don't we just do the opposite, and make money out of it? But is there a plan in place to better these? Do you have some kind of plan to, maybe we won't take losses, or you're just going to stay the course? Take these losses, take it on the chin, and hope for some better times ahead?
Well, the assumed rate of return is 7%. That's the board's assumption. It's not the actuary's assumption, but that's the board's assumption. The board can always lower their assumption, but once the board lowered their assumption, then the liability amount increases. So there's a very fine line. But if the board decides to lower its assumption, then the bogey for Mr. Riga is less. He can then invest in safer assets, not that he's investing in risky assets at the moment in any case. But last year, whether you invested in safe assets or not, the market took a knock. Like Mr. Riga said, even if you put money in bonds, you would not have achieved your rate of return. If your rate of return was 1%, then maybe. But there's not a rate of return, not even for private plans, where we use, where 1% rate of return is used as a discount rate.
You know, the difference between 2026 and 2027 is $9 million. So obviously, someone's anticipating something bad happening between those years.
Well, no, it's what already happened. That 50.9 million, we didn't recognize 50.9 million this year. The 45 million that happened last year, it's not the 45 million that we recognized then. We only recognized 9 million. That 9 million is done in 2026. But the last 20% of the 15.9 million is only done in 2027. So that's why there's a big difference between the two numbers.
Okay. Councilor Chair?
So when you say recognize, what do you mean by recognize?
It means that...
You're not using the whole amount, you're just using the 20%?
Exactly.
Okay, what happens with the rest of the money?
That money is being set aside for next year.
To be used?
To be used.
So basically, like what he's saying, we lost 50...
So, basically, like, like what he's saying, we lost 50 million last year, but instead of losing the 50 million at one time, it's spread over the next four years.
Yep.
So, every year, you'll, you know, they're spreading the 50 million over the next, uh, four years. Losses.
And, and, and that's why our Act 345 constantly changes?
Um, if you don't.
Based on this, based on this report.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yeah, based on the report. That's why it could go up or down when, when we, when we set aside the millage for Act 345. But it doesn't move anywhere near with the annual return. And, and I understand that, but it just, we try to make it up that way.
I don't know, like, this stuff just looks so concerning to me, honestly. I, 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 with due respect to you guys, I know John and I don't know how you feel about this, but this, these numbers don't look flattering to me.
Where would anybody invest? If all of the other pension systems throughout the whole country are losing money, I mean, how can you expect us to be any differently? I mean, we're, we're part of, you know, we have the, the best professionals that we have investing the money and doing the things the best we can. You, you can't put your money in US treasuries because once the interest rate goes up, those bonds go down. So, you, so there is no safe haven, but you have to stay invested because over the long term, we need to achieve the 7%. And we've more than done that, we've been achieving 8% over the long term. So, so we have been doing our job. Is this year a good year? No, this year wasn't a good year.
No, 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 to make it clear, to be clear. No, I was not questioning the job you guys are doing. What I was saying, because you guys are, are direct representatives from within the city, I want to see how you felt about it. No, I didn't, I was not implying anything like that.
I feel that we have to stay invested and continue what we're doing and, and continue to achieve better than 7% over a long term, not looking at one particular year.
But the concern is, see, that, that, that 7% is skewed drastically by the 35% or 34-some percent that we received at one, at one time. So, if you take that, you gotta take typically like the median. So, when you take out the extremes, we're not at the 7%, you know? But, well, I'm talking, if you take out the 34% or 8%, okay. If you take out the extremes, we're not in a good, look, again, I am not an expert in this field, not by any stretch of the imagination, but I know enough to look at this and go, whoa. I, 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 I can't say I'm looking at something that looks good to me with my little expertise.
Basically, over 35 years, we've saved your taxpayers and/or benefits.
The average of 8%.
$75 million.
Which is 8%.
That's the difference between 7 and about 8.44, which is where we are right now. Net of all fees. Now, a lot of systems don't report net of all fees. We capture all that data. Actuary, investment consultant, custodian, all of those legal fees get captured because those, they show up on the bank custodian statements. So, we capture those. And so, we net it all out, everything. Investment manager fees. Um, but over very long periods of time, small percentages mean huge dollar amounts. That's why it ended up being 70 or 75 million dollars. One, one, one and a half percent extra doesn't sound like a lot. When you compound that over decade after decade after decade, it is just huge in terms of dollars.
Counsel Chair.
So, it's, it's worked out for us wonderfully over a long period of time. Over short-term timeframes, it can be painful. 2000 through 2002, three years of a bear market, that was horrible. 2008, that was terrible. But we stayed the course, we were patient, we didn't do anything silly like selling our stocks and moving into bonds because you just never know when it's going to change. And it's going to turn around like it did in 2009 and we had 10 very good years. So, patience is just key to this.
Okay.
Good question. Af- after, uh, 2027, um, are you, are we still going to be in that 7% range?
Well.
Over the, over the long haul, over the 40, 50 years or whatever we're doing, it's still average about 7%?
It's a very hazardous occupation to predict the future, but I'll do that for a second here. So, in the past, when the Fed has broken the back of inflation, and let me just back up for one second. So, right now, this year, for the plan year, the fiscal year, as of the end of April, we're up a little bit over 7%. So, we're right on target as of right now. In the past, when the Fed has broken the back of inflation, and that happened after World War II, I know I'm going back a ways here, and it also happened in the 80s. The market, equity markets, went on long-term bull markets in the 50s and 60s and then again in the 80s and 90s. And the returns were double-digit. And I'm talking 12, 13, 14% from equities. Now, the Fed, right now, and it's painful to get there, but they've been raising rates, they raised rates the fastest that they ever have in history. I'm actually surprised that this year, the market has held up as well as it has with the rate hikes, but the, but the market is sensing that those are coming to an end. And when they do, and inflation has already rolled over, if the CPI peaked last June at 9.1%, we're now down to 4.9 on a year-over-year basis. So, it's happening, it's working. It's not easy as you go through it, but it tends to lead to very good long-term periods. I'm not suggesting we're going to get to mid-teens type of returns, but they are certainly going to be better. Um, so, I, I think the future is bright. Now, we could have a correction at some point, any point in time this summer. That would be very typical, 5% to 10% corrections in equity prices. They happen on average virtually every year. But I think as we look forward to the fourth quarter of this year and looking forward into 2024 and '25, um, the economy's going to recover, it's going to do better. Earnings will do better and therefore, stock prices will do better.
We're all hoping that, for sure.
Yeah. Both of us are.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hey, Councilman.
Okay, I'm going to conclude, um, on page 11. Um, on comment 2. Um, so, we had the negative 17.1% rate of return on the market. And so, we do the smoothing and we calculate the funding value and then we offset against the assets, uh, offset against your liabilities and calculate your contribution requirement. And that left us with a contribution requirement of 5.8, uh, 5.81 million. If we didn't do that calculation and we just used your market value, the 177, to offset against your liabilities, you would have been about, um, 100 million, 8, 90 million underfunded. And then your contribution for this year would have been $7.44 million instead of 5.58. Um, and your funded rate would have been 74.4 instead of 83%. And that's all that I was planning to say unless you have any more, more questions.
Any questions, council members?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like Francois to kind of talk, because, you know, the pension board, we, we deal a lot with the investments, but we, we can't deal with the liability silent situation. I'd like you to talk a little bit about D1 and the li- the, the history of the liability.
What page is that?
Um.
D1. D1? In the back. A, B, C, D.
I mean, thi- this year, our liability went up to, you know, 2.5 million, 2.4 million. But we've had years where the liability was going up $11 million.
Yep.
10 million, that's how you get a lot of that from your, to your unfunding status. It's not necessarily because of the results of the asset, but the liabilities of the system have drastically gone up. Oh, I'm sorry, so Francois, I'm, I'm.
So, um, like John said, in the last year, your liabilities increased by 2.5 million dollars. Um, the year before, it increased by about $11 million. But I believe that, um, in the, in the year before, um, there was about 11, uh, 10 more people added to the plan. So, your liabilities increased, but it increased because you had more members to the plan that earns benefits. And then those people, actually, you had, you had more than 10 people, um, um, that were, that were hired because there were some people that entered the, the drop and retired. Um, but your active membership increased from 109 to 119. I don't have the number in front of me of about how many people retired, um, or entered the drop, but your population is bigger. As your population gets bigger, your liabilities get bigger. Um, your retiree numbers, you are not a mature plan yet, meaning that there are not more members that pass away than members that are added to your retiree rolls. And that's also one of the reasons why liabilities increase.
You, you mentioned the drop, what, what, what do you, uh, speaking about, about the, you said drop?
Yep.
What?
Well, um, members in this plan can either, um, they can retire, um, go from active membership and they can retire. And then they'll just get a monthly benefit each year or each month and then until they, till they pass away. And then the benefit might continue onto a spouse if, if they have a spouse. Or they can enter the drop program. Uh, when they enter the drop program, um, they still continue to work for the, um, city. They do not accrue any more benefits. So, if you work another year, it's not like you're going to get a higher pay towards your pension or more service towards your pension. Your pension benefit is, is, is essentially frozen. That money gets paid into an account. And then when you finally retire from the system and you're not working with the, uh, city anymore, that money is paid and then you will resume, uh, you will start collecting your monthly benefit.
So, is that a, a benefit or a negative to the city?
Um, it can be a benefit, it, it, it can be a negative. Um, most cities, um, you, you still have those people employed with you. That means you don't have to go and get, um, people brand-new out of college or, um, from different employers, um, where they still have to learn, um, what to do. These people know what to do. Um, they just work for you for a, a longer period of time. Um, their benefits don't, don't accrue anymore, they don't increase. Um, that benefit is just paid into an, and a drop account for them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Were you all set on your end or was there more on presentation?
I just want to follow up again.
Go up on that.
On the drop, on the drop situation, is again, it's not something that we can control at the board level. That's a negotiated benefit through contracts, which then we just administrate.
Yeah, right.
And, and that's what I'm saying, in the earlier years, a lot of these liabilities were when benefit increases and individuals towards the end of their careers, it gets recognized sooner. And so, that's what was happening in some of these years when we went from underfunding status to overfunding status to underfunding status. And that started that kind of situation.
So, so, would, would it be a benefit if people who retire and actually leave the city, would it be a benefit to the city if that money was drawn completely out by the, or how does that? I, I, I'm just trying to figure that out.
What you're trying to say, the money in the drop, if they should keep it in or take it out, how does that affect the overall? And I, and that's, that's a math number that's beyond my.
Yeah, well, it, it's just like, you know, in, in, for instance, uh, Joe Schmuckatelli works at ABC and he has a 401K and the company is managing it. And then he retires, leaves the company. They give him X amount of, you know, a month or 60 days to take that money out of that and, you know, move it to wherever you want without a penalty.
Yeah.
And that benefits, uh, obviously, the company. Would that benefit the city?
It, it, it would, um, benefit the city if the city does not make, um, more than 5%.
Okay.
Because that's basically the interest that you pay on the drop account.
Okay, and that's, that's, that's fair.
If you earn less than that, you are to benefit. If you earn more than that, that interest accrues to the, to the retirement system and some of it is paid on, onto the members. Um, so, it probably would not be.
That's, that's understandable.
But we're not talking about millions of dollars here, we're talking about a very small amount. You've only got 13 people in the drop left as it is at the moment.
I just want to add one point. And we want them to take it out when the market is high, not when the market is low. Because when the market is low and the people take out their money, then we don't have the money in the system to earn it as, as, you know, we recover from, um, this year that we.
You've got to have it to give it to them.
Right.
And last 10 years, we made over 7% or over the 5 that were, or that was required.
And that's, that's the other question, we, we've made the money.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sending your presentation, come on up.
Counsel Chair, can we make a rule that they can only take it out when the market's high?
I wish there was a rule like that.
Are you guys hiring Tom Wenzel's?
Okay, good evening, my name is Heidi Andorff and I represent Foster &amp; Foster. I'm a fellow of the Society of Actuaries that works at, um, for Foster &amp; Foster and we serviced your general employees' fund.
We're doing this, we're going over this.
Yeah. Right, you should have a report in front of you that says Foster &amp; Foster on the front. And I'm going to flip you to page 5 of that report. Okay, so on page 5, we show the summary of report, this is our bottom line on top. Um, we'll notice the numbers throughout the report here. The numbers on the rightmost side will be last year's numbers for reference. And then the numbers in the le- leftmost column of numbers will be this year's numbers so that you can see the year-over-year changes. So, if we look at last year versus this year on the total recommended contribution to the fund, which is ultimately the calculation that we're, that we're here to perform, um, there was about an 8.6% increase year-over-year, which was higher than normal years. But again, that, a lot of that has to do with the market. And I'll show you some breakdowns in the report of what that looks like as we flip through this in more detail. So, there was a couple of factors that contributed to that increase. First of all, the methodology that's employed here does use a payroll growth assumption. So, basically, the amortization on your unfunded liability, which also does exist in this fund and we'll, we'll show you that in a couple pages, um, you amortize that using this payroll growth concept, which means that you're counting on your amortization payment to move with payroll. So, as the department payroll grows, so will your amortization payment. At this point, that assumption's 3.5%. And so, every year, if all of our actuarial assumptions come true, I'm going to come to you with a contribution a little bit higher than last year just by the nature of that methodology. Okay, that's part of the methodology that we use for this calculation. In addition, the plan did experience some unfavorable experiences this year. We talked extensively already about the market. That happened in this fund, just like it happened in all the funds across the country last year. Um, in addition, you did see a salary increase that was higher than anticipated. So, again, all of our assumptions are long-term assumptions in the valuation. We try to predict what retirement, um, income will look like. And to do that, we have to set a salary scale assumption. So, somebody who's 25 today, we're trying to predict what their salary is going to be when they ultimately retire. And we do that through the use of this assumption. Every year, we do measure the, um, experience relative to our assumption and this happens to be a year where increases were higher than expected. Some years, you have the opposite happen. So, that volatility is typical in the assumption. But again, everything we're doing here is supposed to be looked at through the lens of long-term. And so, that's, that's really what's happening here. So, you had this one-year salary increase that was higher than expected. Um, in addition, you did have some offsets to that. You had higher-than-expected inactive mortality. So, more people died than we anticipated through our mortality rates. Um, so, that brings liability down. Obviously, you don't have future payments to those folks anymore. And then you did have a little bit higher turnover than anticipated, which was an offsetting factor as well. So, we turn to page 6. Page 6 just highlights some of the changes year-over-year. And this year was an actual relatively stable year when it came to assumptions, when it came to benefits. But I do want to highlight that you will have one assumption or plan change rolling in next year. Um, so, as Francois mentioned, the valuation is performed as of 6/30/2022, using data as of that date, but that's ruled forward to 2023. So, when that 2023, um, year is used and we have data collected at that date, this is, this plan change will be incorporated next year into your report. Okay, so I'm going to turn to page 7 now, get into some of the detailed calculations here. So, again, that leftmost column will be what we'll focus on for the discussion. We have three sections on this page. Section A is the participant data, this is the data that we collected from you to perform the valuation. It's snapshot valuation data collected as of 6/30/2022. So, whoever was in the fund, whatever their status was on that date is who was valued for the purpose of this valuation. Section B shows that asset information. You see the market value and the actuarial value. Similarly, we use the five-year smoothing where we're recognizing only 20% of the gains and/or losses every year. Last year was a loss, so we're only recognizing 20% of that. We'll continue to roll in 20% of that each year. That's always measured relative to the actual assumption of that 7%. So, losses are anything above 7, gains are any, or losses are anything below 7, gains are anything above.
What is terminated vested?
Um, it's somebody who terminated before they're eligible to start their annuity. So, it could be somebody who's aged, say, 30, that they have earned the right to a future benefit, but they're not yet the age of eligibility to start receiving that annuity. So, they're waiting to, to, basically, they're waiting. So they're waiting to, basically, they're waiting to age into the annuity.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Sure. And then lastly, section C is where we'll start to dive into the liabilities. Pay, I'm going to flip you quickly to page 35 of that report. It'll be a little bit easier to see what happened with the valuation data over that time period. So we do have a valuation participant reconciliation. So we take the data as of 6/30/2022 and, and look at what we're using as of 6/30/2023, which is really a year lag approach that we're using here. So you can see that the, the prior valuation had 118 actives. We're down to 117 actives, one less than last year, but we did get there through some experience. You had more terminations than, than expected. As I mentioned, five of those terminations are due future annuities. These are those terminated vested employees. They are not yet receiving their annuity, but they will eventually. Four of those folks took a lump sum of their money. So they, they are no longer due anything from your fund. They took their money and, and they're done. Then you had four folks retire. So they are, they retired in our, in annuity status now, and then those folks were replaced by 12 new hires. So you, you brought those on to, to replace the majority of the losses that you had through Exodus. We look at the bottom of that page there, you see the reconciliation of the inactive. So this is where you can see that higher mortality rate. So if we look at the, the first column there, we have retirees of 132 at the last valuation. We're down to 130 at this valuation due to eight deaths in that population, replaced by six retirements. Four from the actives, two of those terminated vested that we talked about were, they hit the age where they're eligible to start their annuity. So they moved over to this category now. So you can see some of the movement there, and then the other place we saw a lot of that inactive mortality was in the beneficiary ranks. That's the second column there at the bottom. So you went from 25 beneficiaries down to 20. Beneficiaries are simply the spouses of the former retirees that, that are now receiving benefits on behalf of their eligible spouse. Okay? I'm going to turn you back to page seven. Section B shows you the assets, and I'm not going to get into the detail of the smoothing. It's the same smoothing method that, that they're using on the police and fire fund. But what's important to note here is if you look at last year's valuation, you can see that the actuarial value of market, actuarial value was 42.7 million versus the market last year was 47.1 million. So you actually had deferred gains last year. So that was prior to reflecting the market losses as of 6/30/2022. So the actuarial value is actually about 91% of market value. That situation has reversed this year just due to that one year of market return. And so this year, you actually have those deferred losses that you'll be reflecting in future valuations. And so the relationship of the actuarial value and the market value is reversed, and the actuarial value is about 11 and 12% higher than the market value. So that's typical, and that just tells us the smoothing method's doing exactly what it should be doing. You're reflecting some of the experience over the year, but you're not reflecting it all at once. That will mitigate that volatility in the contribution that we bring to you each year. So that nine, you know, eight and a half percent, 9% increase that we came to you with would have been much higher had we not had the smoothing method going on. Okay, the last section here is the liabilities. So in the liabilities, the very first calculation we perform as an actuary is the present value of benefits. That number is that $60.1 million, the bottom of that column, and what that represents is if you had assets of $60.1 million today in the fund, you would be fully funded on the 321 people that we valued as of the valuation date. This is not a number you would fund to because some of these benefits have not yet been earned. Your actives are still going to be working for you up to retirement, and this number reflects that, that concept. So it's, it's including service that we expect to happen that has not yet happened. So on page eight, we actually break that down. And here you can see near the bottom of that leftmost column, total actuarial accrued liability of 55.7 million. That number is representative of benefits that have already been earned by your active population, includes all your inactive liability, and that's really your target here. This is what you're funding to. We compare that 55.7 million to the actuarial value of assets, that smoothed value where we help mitigate some of that market volatility, and we get an unfunded actuarial accrued liability of about $13 million in this fund. That's reflective of service that's already been earned but not yet paid for. So effectively, the city has a mortgage of $13 million towards this fund for benefits that have already been earned by the population but still has to be paid down. That will be a component of the contribution that we show you in a couple pages. That gives you a funded ratio on an actuarially smoothed asset basis of 76.7%. That did decrease slightly from last year. We expected that with the markets. Most funds saw a decrease year-over-year, so you're not unique in that sense. The last number I want to point out on this page is the total normal cost number near the middle of that column of $662,000, and that is representative of the cost of your active population earning one year of pension accruals. So by working one more year, if all else, you know, all, all, all came true with our actual assumptions and you were fully funded, you would be paying about $662,000 per year just to maintain the cost of that new accrual. However, I'm going to flip you now to page 10. On page 10, on section E here, we actually roll all of that information together into the contribution calculation. And so you can see the first, that leftmost column here, the top number is normal cost. We have applied interest here because our numbers previously were calculated as of the valuation date. We know they're not paid on that date. They're paid later in the year, so we do apply interest to those. But that gives you the normal cost of 708,000. And then if there were member contributions like there are for police and fire, that would be offsetting to that normal cost. This fund doesn't have that, so there is no offset for that. So the city is, would be on deck for that full 708. However, there is a large number in the middle, that mortgage I mentioned on that unfunded. So you are paying that down over 19 years, and that's in the middle of the page there, that $969,000 number is effectively that amortization payment, that mortgage to catch up to become fully funded. We add those two numbers together to give us the expected city contribution of $1,677,626. Okay, so about 58% of the recommended contribution is just catching up and trying to pay down that unfunded. So in 19 years, the good news is that goes away. Unfortunately, the bad news is that's 19 years out. So hopefully, assets to return something better for us this year, and we see that reverse a bit. But that's where we are right now. Section F just shows you how the fund, how the plan was funded relative to the recommendation. You can see that there was full funding last year. There's no shortfalls to worry about here. So I'm going to flip you to page 12 quickly, just in the interest of time. So if we look at page 12, we do break that down, pension costs by division just based on payroll. So this is a allocation simply based on the payroll by department, if you did need to look at that by department. If we look at page 13, this shows us the development of that amortization payment. So this is that mortgage payment that I was talking about, and I mentioned this payroll growth concept, the 3.5% payroll growth assumption that's being applied. So the very bottom right-hand corner of that page shows you a number of $906,000. That's the beginning of the year amortization payment calculation. As I mentioned, when we looked at that in section E, we did apply interest to that because it's paid later in the year. But using that 3.5% payroll growth assumption, if all of my assumptions come true next year, I'm coming back to you with the number 3.5% higher than 906 next year, guaranteed. It's just the methodology that's employed right now. One thing you can do, i- in the short term, it does cost more, but one thing you could do to mitigate the growth of that amortization payment is to decrease that payroll growth assumption. So that's something that when we do the experience study in a couple of years, we'll probably want to talk about whether 3.5% is the right place to be. And a lot of that just depends on, you know, budgeting and thinking about how, how much can the city afford to see growth in this, this number. So bringing that down though, for example, if we were to bring this down to 0%, which we're not advising, but just to give you a feel for what this would look like if it was truly amortized like the mortgage on your house, that number goes from 906 up to $1,173,000. So it's about a $267,000 increase. It's hard to change this assumption, and it's hard to change it quickly. But bringing it off that 3.5% eventually might make some sense just to mitigate the growth in this. Okay? So let's turn to page 15. This is one of my favorite pages in the report. This gives us the reconciliation of the changes in the contribution requirement year-over-year. So item one at the top shows us what we recommended last year. Item three shows us what we're recommending this year, and this shows you all the factors that contributed to that increase year-over-year. So if we look at the heavy hitters here, investment return. Now, this is on the smoothed actuarial basis. On a smooth basis, you earned 5.5% as opposed to the 7% expected. That cost, that cost the fund about $46,000 just because of the market last year, and that's with the smoothing incorporated. As I mentioned, that payroll growth assumption, all else being equal, I'm going to come back to you next year with a number of about $31,000 higher than this year if all my assumptions come true. So that's just the methodology that's employed. We did see salary increases that were higher than expected. So salary increases for this population last year were north of 10%. We expected, based on our actual assumptions, 3.96%. So that cost the fund about $28,000 the prior couple of years. We actually saw salary increases lower than expected, so it's likely contracts that get timed, and, and that happens. That will happen over a long term.
Is that the inactive mortality?
So that's the last item. That was your offset. Inactive mortality, you did see more deaths than expected, and so you could see that saved the fund about $29,000.
So when you say inactive mortality, that's people with no spouses?
Some, some of them had spouses, some did not. So we have a valuation assumption that anticipates some people having spouses. Sometimes they don't though, or, you know, we think they did, and then we find out when they actually are deceased, their spouse predeceased them, and at that point in time, we release more liability than we anticipated, which is what's happening here. So that shows you how you got from year-over-year. By turning to page 17, quickly to point out, this is a projection of the benefit payments we anticipate in the fund. This is based on our assumptions to date. We would anticipate your benefits to grow based on that final column there on the right-hand side. If I look at that 3.8 million, 3.9 million dollar number on the 2023 row, and I compare that to your market value of assets, it is about 10% of the market value. So you are paying about 10% of assets out each year just to pay out on benefits. That was lower last year, obviously, with the market going down. We, we're seeing a bigger percentage of that. So hopefully, we see that reverse in the future as well. Just to point out to you, page 18 and 19 do show you a summary of the assumptions that we use to perform the valuation. The last study was done in 2021. Studies are required to be done on a five-year cycle, so we would anticipate in a couple of years, we'll be coming back to you with new assumptions. Generally speaking, the demographic assumptions aren't too volatile. We'll tweak some things here and there, but that'll be coming in a couple of years. I'm going to flip you all the way to page 28 now. So 28 is just a summary of the data that we received to perform the valuation, focusing again on that leftmost column. We do collect data as of 6/30/2022. This shows you the average age and salary of your active population here at the top. You could see the number of service retirees you have and their average age, which is about 72. And, and then similarly, your beneficiaries. You have 20 left. We did see more inactive deaths. You could kind of see the head counts and how they shifted year-over-year a little bit more dramatically, especially in your beneficiary ranks. Okay? I'm going to turn you now to page 30. Page 30 is an interesting page to look at. This is taking your active population and it's dividing it up across age on the leftmost column, service across the top. If you focus sort of on the bottom right-hand part of that page, you could see who might be eligible for retirement. And if I look at eligibility for retirement, anybody who's 65 with five or more years of service or has achieved that, depending on the category they're in, it could be as low as 50, 55 and 20, 25, I'm sorry, that you have somewhere around 9% to 10% of the folks that were eligible for retirement. That's relatively low. So in terms of, you know, a run on the bank or any extreme increases in your benefit payments in the future, I don't anticipate that. This fund isn't in a position where there's a lot of folks sitting and waiting to retire. We do see that sometimes, and you probably see that more with a police and fire type fund than you would with a general fund. Okay? And then the last page I want to point out is page 36. So page 36 does show you a three-page summary of the plan provisions that we did value for the fund. This does not replace your municipal code, but it is a much quicker reference if you are looking for what the benefits are for folks. This three-page summary can suffice quite well. So with that, are there any questions from the board?
Council Chair? Go ahead, Councilman.
You, you said that there's four employees that took the lump sum payout. How much, how much was that? Do you have that?
I don't have that information. I could get that, but I don't have.
I don't know if you can answer this question, or Francois, or John. Now, when they take a large lump sum payout, it's calculated into their last few years of service for their pension. Does that, does that affect it that much? The pension, future pension, is that figured in in the actuary?
This, this, we don't necessarily have really lump sum payouts. Those, the lump sum payouts in this system would be people who have maybe left the system and had, were in the process of purchasing time as a refund of the purchase of time. But there's no lump sum payouts from, from our system. Okay? So basically, if somebody was purchasing time, but then they left, they would get a refund of that time that they purchased. And so it's really been their contribution, not a lump sum payout of their pension. There is no such thing in this particular fund of a lump sum payout of their pension.
What about when someone takes the lump sum payout of their, their comp hours?
That, that is not something that's through the pension system. That's something through the city's general fund.
Would that, would that affect the pension system at all if they're taking something like, say it's their last year and they're taking $150,000 in a lump sum and that shows the income for that year?
Normally, not in the general system because they don't, they're not allowed, most of them are not, they have very limited how much overtime they can put in it. It's just their regular pay and a small amount of overtime. In the police and fire system, their contracts are structured where some of their payouts get rolled into their pension, a final average comp. But again, that's based on the contracts that have been approved, and we're just kind of making sure that that gets followed throughout. We're administering that.
All right, thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Any other questions from council members? Ladies, gentlemen, appreciate it very much. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and, and take a five-minute break before we start our regular council meeting.
Another question taken. Appreciate it.
Wait, I'm sorry. Wait, just one second. I have, I'm going to allow the public, there's somebody in the public that would like to ask questions, so I'm not allowing them to ask questions. I'm sorry. Yes.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, Zahir Abdalha.
I thought you said we were taking five minutes.
Hello?
There's some questions from the public.
I'm sorry. Are we gonna, are we gonna hold time?
Yeah, just, just leave some two or three minutes. No, just a couple fast questions. I've been asking them for a long time. Zahir Abdalha, 354 Rosemary. I was listening on Zoom actually, and I heard something about the drop program Councilman Muscat asked. We lost money last year, I assume, and there is in the contract 5% given to the drop program. And this question I have been asking for the last probably seven, eight years, and I need some clear answer. Do we take the 5% when we pay it to those people who are participating in the drop program? Do we pay it from the pension fund or we charge it to the residents with the actuary report?
Now, just to, just to be sure, Abdalha, you're talking about if it's less than 5% obviously, right?
Yeah, the 5%, which we guarantee.
Right, so but if it's, you're referencing if it's less than 5%. That's what you're asking.
Yes, if it is less than 5%, we are under obligation by contract to pay the participant 5% interest on their money. And this could be removed by negotiation, which happened recently, but it did not. So I want to know what is the effect on the resident? Do we pay it when the actuary report is prepared as 5% added to what they ask for? Or do we take it from the funds, which are in the pension, you know, fund and give it to them?
So you use, Francois, use a hypothetical if we earn 3% just to keep it simple.[1717.03]
So use, Francois, use a hypothetical, if we earn 3%, just to keep it simple.
What did we earn last year? I mean, saying we lost, so what was the earning last year?
Well, you earned negative 17 last year on your pension assets. That five, that 5% is still paid to the drop member. And because it's paid to the drop member, that money is essentially guaranteed to that, to the drop member, so the money is set aside for them. That is going to increase your pension contribution slightly, and that money will need to be made up by city contributions, whether it's contributions from the city's general fund or Act 345, wherever the money comes from. That amount is going to be slightly higher because the city did not achieve its, the 5% goal. Now, on the other hand, if you achieve the 5%, if you achieve more than the 5% goal, that is going to decrease the contribution, and that's not going to cost the residents.
So I have spoke to you several years ago, probably two, three years ago, about the same subject. And you told me the same thing. So mainly, the residents, if we do not achieve 5%, the residents pay that 5%.
So here, step up to the microphone.
Can you come closer to the microphone?
Sure. I spoke to Francois when I was in the treasurer's office, and he gave me the same answer. And some people come and say, no, we do not pay it. I'm just asking very clear question. And he just said, if we do not make 5% or more, the residents of the city have to make up that 5%. Am I correct, Francois?
The, 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 the contribution that the city is going to pay is going to make up that, that 5%. Where the money is coming from, if it's from the residents, then...
So basically, this question is, are we paying it this year from the budget? Or are we spreading or smoothing, whatever you said, over the next five years?
It's included in the liabilities.
Smoothing it. So is it coming from our budget this year?
So it's included in the liabilities, and therefore, it's included in the contribution amount in the 5.581 million. If you have to, where, where you get the money from, from the general fund or from city residents to pay the 5.581, that is where that's going to come from.
Okay, and do we do that right now or do that after five years in case we don't make money?
We're doing it now.
No, you do it every year.
Every year.
Every year, the contribution includes payment of the 5% because that's when members earn their money on the drop account.
This is by the end of June?
I, you'll have to ask.
And this is, we have to be paid by the end of June, the fiscal year?
So the amounts are not actually paid out. They're, could increase an individual's value in their drop account, so their amount would go up. And so what I think Francois is saying is it becomes part of the liabilities of the system, and the liabilities are compared against the assets, and then the calculation of the amount of the, of the contribution is calculated, and how the unfunded part of that is being amortized over, over periods, you know, over the 15 years, right?
So, so if, say they made 3%, only 3%, we have to make up 2% to be at 5?
Yep, because the contract, most of them, while they're in the drop, is 5%. Yes.
And this is coming out of the city annual budget?
No, sir. It's, it's becoming part of the calculations that he just went through of the liabilities.
That's why I said, and he said, no.
You're saying part of the calculation.
Of this, because the thing we just went through.
I understand.
Yeah.
This calculation, when it is demanded from the city, who pays it?
The residents.
Thank you.
Oh, we all know that.
This is my, what I have been saying for several years.
Well, I wanted to clarify a few points, is that we don't actually pay it out. It becomes the value of the drop.
It goes to their drop program value.
That's right.
That is added. That is true.
But they decided to cash out.
But at the end of the day, what I'm saying, the resident to pay the 5% if they do not achieve 5%.
That's right.
This is what I want the city council to understand.
Yes.
And this could be eliminated by negotiation. That's what I'm trying to say. My second question. The negotiation, which was done by the mayor, was the police, gave 4%, 4% and 5% increases in salary. Was there any actuary report done to show the effect of that increase on the pension or the budget or the liability to the resident? Did you do any actuary report, where you asked to do any actuary report?
No, we were not asked to do an actuary report, and I don't think the Michigan constitution requires you to do an actuary report because it's not a benefit that changed. You did not change a multiplier. You changed condition of employment.
The salary has increased, which means the pension will be increased because the contribution will be increased. I'm just asking, as smart, smart decision-making is to know exactly what you going to affect the resident with? How is your budget going to be affected? Do you have that money? Do you have to increase the mileage? At least, if you're going to make good decision, you should know at least that.
Okay. Thank you, council chair.
Thank you, sir.
The actua, the actuarial evaluation report, we do what they call an experience study every five years. And so that experience study kind of shows us of what the payrolls have done during those, during those last five years. And so we then, at the board, would say, well, we need to make an actuarial assumption based on wage increases. So there is a wage increase assumption in the report. So while it may not be, I mean, I don't even know what it is off the top of my head, but so like the wage increases may have been 4%, we may only assume 3.5%. So then there would be an effect over our experience, experience of what we, because we were only assuming one. I mean, we make so many assumptions when these are put together, but that's why we do the experience study every five years to see if we're in line with what's actually going on with the administration of wages, people retiring, people passing away, and all of those type of things to make sure we're in line. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
Council chair?
Just my last remark.
Quickly on what you said there. I asked for an actuary on this command concert, command officer's contract three or four weeks ago, and they said that they hadn't done one yet, but they were going to do one. It was either the comptroller or the HR departments that said that. Did we instruct them to do an actuary report on that contract?
Regarding the supervisors contract?
Yes, command, command officers.
The command officers, you mean, the TA, they showed their, I believe that Margaret, the HR commissioner, goes over to TA once the contract has been approved.
So there was one done?
Yes.
Okay, and they said there wasn't one.
Listen, this is one time a year the residents can raise their voice.
Pass the time. So one last quick question, please.
My, my last question, we are short 28 officers in the police department, which means the salaries went down big time. What is the effect on the number which they are asking for? Is it based on the full number which was in, working at the police department or minus the 28, which we have now less? The contribution you're asking this resident to pay should be less because you have less number of people working. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
The contributions for the normal cost is based on the 114 people that we had in the data as of June 30, 2022. It's based on the payroll of that 114. When the contribution is made, more often than not, the comptroller's office or the finance department makes the normal cost payment. They take the rate that we've got, that 18.71%, and they multiply it with the pays that they have at that point in time. And if the pays are lower, then that, then that normal cost contribution amount will be lower.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this particular point, we're going to go ahead and end this. We'll take a five-minute break.
Council chair?
Yes, you had a question?
Yeah, I had one question, and, or actually several questions, but one, and I apologize for being late, for the mayor, John Riley. So obviously, first a statement, obviously, the more employees participating in the, for example, in the police department and the pension, you know, paying into the pension,